All right, Danielle, let's start.
All right, the meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thanks, let's please rise for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as one. Tonight, let's have a moment of silence for all those that perished in 1941 Pearl Harbor. Two thousand four hundred and six of our service members died and sacrificed their lives so we can enjoy our country and serve our country and serve our town. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, everybody. So tonight, again, a little deja vu. We have a public hearing on the local law of the year 2025, amending various provisions of chapter 125 zoning of the quarter code of the town of Marlboro as follows. Amendment section 155-1 terms defined adding additional permitted accessory use to section 155-12A residential district, add an additional permitted accessory use to section 155-12C RAG 11R rural agricultural district, and adding a new section 155-32.6 detached accessory dwelling units on a single-family property. And just to remind everyone, the change in the code from the previous version is exactly the same, except we were now adding R district to be able to be allowed to use these ADUs. And again, these are ADUs, detached ADUs on a one-acre parcel. But using the R district, they could also be now in the R district, which would be less than a one-acre parcel, as long as they have water and sewer, and they could build up to a 900-square-foot detached ADU unit for rentable use. It cannot be used for Airbnbs, bed and breakfasts, or anything of that nature. It has to be for rental purposes only. And now it's time for public hearing. If anybody has any further comments on the ADU code change of 155. And we did send it up to the county, and I did get something back. I will read if anybody else has any public comments. Mary Beth, come on up.
I have more to offer. I don't have, I think this is great, but my question is, if it's not meant for Airbnb and, you know, rental, how will you determine that?
How do we know that? Well, I could tell you that our building department now, monthly, go on all the Airbnb bed and breakfast websites, and they search for Marlboro Airbnbs and such. And if none of them are registered, they will get a letter from the building department. Matt, this is part of Matt's assignments right now. And so obviously, if someone comes in and they do an ADU, and now we see that they're doing it as an Airbnb, we will find out. But again, if they do it without advertising it in some way, it's very hard to police.
Yeah, if it's not online. And would there be a fine if they were?
Oh, yeah, it would be defined by the court. They would go to court.
Oh, they would go to court. Okay, okay. Yeah, so that's all my question was, is how would you monitor?
It's a good question, because, you know.
No, I know, it's for affordable.
It's a very good question.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? I will read the, I actually just got it. So, so basically, it seems like it says, this is from Ulster County Planning Board. Town propose adoption amending to its zoning ordinance a regular detached accessory dwelling unit, ADU R1, RAG1, and now R zoning district. No decision. So the Ulster County Planning Board, Ulster County Planning Board was unable to reach a decision on the application, and no action was taken on the referral from the board. I'm assuming that normally means that they didn't meet yet and that they will be meeting. So the notice informs you that upon the lapse of 30 days, you may consider requirements of section 239M to be complete and take final action on the application. We offer the following staff comments if the following planning board does not take final action before the Ulster County Planning Board in the next 30 days. So basically, they're saying, obviously, if we elapse 30 days and we have a meeting, we can satisfy the requirement that we refer them. But I will give you the staff comments. The staff comments offer the following comments for your consideration. The proposed amendment continues to be positive in the progress. The town now proposes to extend ADUs to R zoning district, limit accessory dwelling units, ADUs to one per home, allowing new and existing structure to be converted for this use, and prohibit short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts from being located within them. The town has also allowed detached ADUs as a permitted accessory residential use, thereby removing the need for special permit and for site plan review. Ulster County Planning Board continues to recommend that ADUs be permitted as a right, regardless of whether a lot requires an area variance or existing undersized lot, as long as adequate drinking water and wastewater facilities are available and are approved by the Ulster County Department of Health if necessary. For exceptional circumstances in which an undersized lot has unique environmental constraints, such as topography or presence of wetlands, the board recommends that the board allow the code enforcement officer to reserve the right to refer such more complex cases to the town planning board for site plan review. Furthermore, the Ulster County Planning Board recommends that the town not only allow detached accessory units as a right, but as all types, whether they are internal to the primary structure additions to the existing structure, or in the converted attic or basement or existing structure, of ADU as a right, unless there is a limited factor for, as just discussed. Finally, the Ulster County Planning Board recommends the amendment not be limited to RR1, RAG1 zoning district, and also include single-family residence use in the C zoning district. And that's from the principal planner up at the Ulster County Planning Board. I just want, the one section of it where it says that gives the right for the code enforcement officer to, the code enforcement officer always has, reserves the right to do so on any of these ADUs, so I'm not sure why they keep asking us to put that in the code, because that's already a known fact. And the other part, the reason why at this point we haven't included internal use of ADUs, just so everybody knows, because it contradicts all our two-family zoning within our codes right now. If you have an accessory-use apartment with inside a single-family home, it now becomes a two-family home.
Yes, Scott, I was just going to ask about that. I know we've discussed that prior, but is there any advantage or differentiating definition of what would constitute a two-family home versus an accessory dwelling unit within the home?
You gotta have a one acre per unit, which means you have to have a minimum two acres. So it's not one acre. It has to have, meet all fire codes, which means separation. You have to have insulated sheet rock and all that type of stuff for fire code. Some cases, depending, you may have to require sprinklers if necessary, but not usually. But the biggest thing is two acres, and fire code is the other. So, but again, it comes to two family, and then that would go, obviously, that would go to the planning board. That's beyond what we're recommending right now. I think there's further discussion we could have down the road, because there could be things we can change within our code to allow this, but there's going to be a lot more changes within the code to allow that, but.
So this could potentially be a first step that we could expand down the road if it's successful?
Yeah, I mean, if we, look, we had this discussion a couple of times, but if we allow internal use on a one-acre property, just to have an ADU and have really no oversight restriction to it, that means every single, almost every single home in the town of Marlboro now could become a two-family home. That's basically what you're saying, right? Because we have a one-acre restriction on residential housing, right? Which, so we're saying, if you have one acre, you could have an ADU, which basically, we're saying that almost every single house in the town of Marlboro could be a two-family. I don't know if we really want to do that right now. It definitely, in principle, sounds good for getting more housing within the, in your community, but it also could become overbearing and too many people being influx into our community. So I think that's why you gotta be very careful when you change these codes, to understand the consequences of 10, 20 years down the road of what you're doing here. And I think by limiting it right now to a detached unit, that limits the amount of people that may be doing this at this point. If I think somewhere down the line, I think if we could look into our codes further to kind of limit the ability, so like saying that you have to have at least two acres to do this, possibly that can be a change. But I think there's got to be a lot more further discussion on this. But I think us to start getting some ADU units and availability for affordable housing in the, in the community, I think this is a good first step, so.
Agreed.
What's that, Mayor? I can't hear you.
She wants to make another comment. She's asking if she can make another comment.
Come on up, hurry up, hurry up, you. That's all right.
It struck me when you were speaking, well, here, we get up here. So it struck me when you were saying that it needed to have water and septic, so.
That's in the R district only.
Okay, would you consider changing that to a water and waste disposal system? Because you could then have a compostable toilet, you know, because.
This is just R district, and R district, just about everybody in R district has water and sewer. It's, it's basically in the hamlet. So this is less than one acre.
Just not to belabor the point, but, you know, so we have a big garage and the second-story garage, we were looking at making that a, I don't know, living space. And so, but to put the septic in, the septic is on the other side of the lot, and it was, I don't know how many thousands of dollars per square foot, and it had to go, you know, each, and so, so that became, you know, it became cost prohibitive. And then I was exploring, oh, well, then maybe we would just have, we had water, but maybe we could have a compostable toilet. We never pursued it.
I mean, it has to, like, in the code, it already says you have, has to be border health approved, so you have to have border health approval for any of these ADUs.
Okay.
So which means they would have to approve your septic system or any of that nature. It doesn't really become, it's not that the town allows it.
It's not a septic system, per se.
Yeah, that's, it's gotta be border health approval, so.
Okay, all right, I was just.
So the county would come down, and if they give border health approval, then the building department is satisfied with that requirement.
All right, okay, sorry, thank you.
Go ahead, Mick.
So I had previously commented about having some type of inclusion in the amendment, in the proposed law, that it be revisited in a specific time period, just to make sure that it is actually working for the town to allow that. And it hit me especially, I mean, it made sense, what you said the last time, that you could change the code at any time. But if we are changing it so that on a one-acre lot, say in the hamlet, your point is very well-taken. We could have multiple, multiple homes having these ADUs on there, which down the line are going to not always be rental, I would assume. And sooner or later, somebody's going to want to subdivide or do something, and we're going to have another thing. So my suggestion would be to put in some kind of a clause that it would be revisited in a certain period of time. If it works, fine, you continue the code as is, but because you've already brought up several examples of what might go wrong, it might behoove us to actually say we're going to revisit it.
I don't know if we have to put a specific timeframe. I think every board at any time has the right to look at a code all the time. I could already tell you, I'm going to be asking the board, we're going to be looking at this code probably mid-next year again. I've already discussed it with Pat Hines and our attorney.
Okay.
So, and the building department. But, yeah, I mean, I don't think we necessarily have to put a specific timeframe to review. That'd be like saying we have to put a timeframe in for every code in our book to review. It's reviewable upon the board's discretion, right? I mean, that's just the way codes are. And sometimes it's reviewable upon applicants that come to the planning board. Applicants come to the planning board, and things come up, and then we review them. But I just don't think we want to open up Pandora's box right now, as far as allowing this internally to homes in every one-acre home. But there may be things that we have to look through in our code to make it where it possibly, possibly can happen, but there have to be safeguards put in place. So that's what we're discussing.
So have, have you had multiple people already asking about putting in an ADU in the R district within the hamlet? Have people already been contacting the building inspector to do that?
There's been a couple of questions about that. That's kind of why it came up, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because they were like, you know, I have, some, some of them, and there's a couple of homes actually in the R district that actually have more than an acre, believe it or not, which is unusual, but there are. But, yeah, so there were a few people that asked, but we're going to see how it goes. Look, I want to, I want to really see like a year's worth of applications for this and see where it goes. If we only see five of them, and we see it's not really doing what we expect, then, then that's where you start saying, okay, maybe there's other spots we have to open this up to, to make it work. Because, you know, the point of doing this isn't just to do it. The point of this is to actually help people and help with housing in the, in the state, in our county, and get people affordable housing, so they could stay in our community. But we also don't want to make it where we, we become Kingston. I shouldn't say that, but I don't want to become that. I don't want to become Kingston, where it's opened up and everybody is here, and there's just too many people. Because when you get more, more people and more, you need more services, and when you need more services, that means more taxes. And we kind of, kind of try to balance that. And I like taking baby steps. I think this board is looking at taking baby steps and then evaluate. But to your point, like I said, it's, I don't like to put a timeframe on it. I just think we have to be diligent and review our codes every so often as, as needed, right? And in this case, like I said, I'm going to be looking at it with the board probably within the next six months, reviewing it. Then by the end of the year, hopefully, we'll see how many of these ADU applications we get. And if we think we need to make a change, we'll be ahead of the game that we will make that change, right? I mean, so.
I'm very happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the zone change for chapter 155.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so what we have to do now is, there's environmental part two. That was, we're the lead agency on this, and our attorney and our engineer did this for us, so just want to go through a quick, impact on the land, there was none. Everything's checked, no. Impact on geological features, no. Impact to surface water, no. And you would think this is common sense, because we're not really. Impact to groundwater, no. Impact to flooding, no. Impact to air, no. Impact to plant and animals, no. Impact to agriculture resources, no. Impact to aesthetic resources, no. Impact to historic and architectural resources, no. Impact to open space and recreation, no. Impact to critical environmental areas, no. Impact to transportation, no. Impact to energy, no. Impact to noise, odor, and lights, no. Impact to human health, no. Consistency with community plans, no. No impact. Consistency with community character, no, no impact. That's it. So I need a motion to accept the environmental impact, full environmental assessment form, part two, identification of potential project impacts for the ADUs. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved, thank you. All right, so that's our ADU. All right, so now we have our regular meeting of the month for December 8th. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move, motion to approve the minutes from November 24, 2025 town board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from November 24th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And since it's the end of the year, I want to thank Danielle, because doing these minutes every, every week, every two weeks is a lot of work, so I just want to say thanks. Danielle, you do a really great job, so thank you very much. I need authorization payment of bills of $143,831.03.
I'll make a motion to authorize the payment of bills, $143,831.03.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move, comments on the agenda, specifically any comments on the agenda only. No comments on the agenda. Reports of department, the board got all the reports of the department. Do you have any questions to anybody? Jerry, I wanted to have Jerry come up and just be quick about, since it's the time of the year where we have snow removal and people parking in our public spaces, I just want to make, have him make a couple of comments tonight.
So the town has municipal parking lots. Those lots are signed and notated as to where they are. They're signed for overnight, no overnight parking. That seems to be an issue lately. We really haven't done anything about it, but we are going to. There's no parking in those municipal lots on the overnights from 12:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. For the rest of this week, we'll be putting out notices on cars that are violating it. Next week, we will start towing and removing those cars that are illegally parked overnight. The exception, snow emergencies. Those municipal lots are used for off-street parking, for everybody that has to park on the streets, and those, during a snow emergency, those cars will not be towed or nor ticketed. They are allowed to be there in the lots on the overnight. There's two lots, one on Western Avenue by Captain Supply, and the other is on Main Street in Milton, just before the firehouse, the old parking lot to St. James Church. There's also off-street parking available during snow emergencies only at the Presbyterian Church in the Village. Just, if there's anybody here can spread the word, like I said, the major problem we've had is people have turned our municipal lots into their personal driveways, and they leave cars there for weeks.
Can we put that on the website?
I'm sure we can. I will put something together with Danielle tomorrow, and we'll have it posted. Like I said, for the next week or so, we're going to be putting warnings, signs on people's cars. We're going to be running registrations and going knocking on their doors, let them know that they can't park where they're parking on the overnight. Sometime next week, once the sign is up that clarifies the time, we will then start the enforcement action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Question on that, well, related question, not for you. Danielle, how, do you know offhand how large our text notification list is at this point? Like, how many people are getting our, our town texts when we send them out? Okay, yeah, I'm just, I've gotten a few comments recently from people asking how we distribute information, and I'm thinking there's probably not that many people on that list, so maybe in the new year, yeah, that's what I figured, maybe in the new year we need to do a campaign to try to collect more numbers and get more people signed up for that, so that we can more easily distribute this information.
I mean, we get more on our social media than anything. We have a lot of followers on our social media. Websites, they don't seem to have followers.
Of course not.
They used to in the past, I guess, when.
But we're getting, you know, we get a thousand people that come to trunk-or-treat. We could try to be collecting people's cellphone numbers at those events and try to just make that list more robust.
Sure, that's true. Yeah, I was just going to say, this leads into Danielle's got some news. The new town clerk is going to be making some changes.
First, first, I'll finish that. So if you go on to the townofmarlboro.ny.gov, there is a tab that you can click on, it says notify me, and you can sign up for either emergency alerts, news alerts, or calendar alerts. So you could choose email, or text, or both. And you can sign up for all three, or just one, whatever you choose. Also, job opportunity alerts, you can sign up for, too. So that's, that's that part. The other thing is, come January 2nd, will be our tax collection time, and we are moving to a different, we've been going through the process for the last few months, the Ulster County tax collection software has been discontinued, and it's no longer supported by the county. So towns have had to find their own, they had suggestions, but there are a few, there were a few different options. So we, we are going to be using a new tax collection software, and we're also going to be collecting taxes online if you choose to pay by credit card or e-check. So if people currently pay by that way, pay their water bill that way, there's another tab right next to their, the water, pay your water sewer bill online, there'll be a look up and/or pay your tax bill online. So you could look up your tax bill, you could look up your receipt, you could pay your bill online. There's a fee to pay online, it's a dollar fifty for an e-check. For debit and credit cards, it's 2.65% with a $3 minimum. These fees go directly to the company. The town does not make any money, and the town does not pay anything either, we can't. So only the people who choose to pay online would pay that fee. And then, again, the link is right on the front page of our, our website, townofmarlboro.ny.gov. And.
That they have to, just tell them about you have to authenticate and.
That's for me, I'm not sure that they have to do that. I think it's just like with anything else, if you go online and buy something, you, you go in and you put your payment information, and I believe you can do it as a guest, or you can create an account. So, and then this way, next year will be maybe easier, because it'll save your information. But the two factors, Scott, that's for me, for logging into the software for, for safety purposes.
So, and if people don't realize, we also have, like Danielle was saying, we actually already have this for our water billing. This is going to be a different company, but it's also going to be, we're also looking at possibly getting a machine for the office, so you could do it for.
Baby steps.
Baby steps. Get into the new modern world here. You know, because a lot of people come in and they want to use their, their credit card for whatever reasons.
Yep.
But right now, we don't accept it. But we can accept it as long as you pay the fee, because we're not allowed to pay the fees, we have to collect the exact amount. So this company, we might have an opportunity to do that. So we're going to start with the taxes, and then if they go well, we might look at the opportunity to do that. So we're, like Danielle says, we're taking baby steps, like we do with everything. And I think it's great that Danielle's done a lot of work. This has been going on for six months now, at least, and she's been working with the company, and I think she's ready to go for her first tax season as the town clerk on her own, so I'm glad she's doing it, so, thank you, Danielle.
Awesome, Danielle, that's great. I will be the first person to use it.
Bing, you'll be the first person to use it. That's funny. All right, presentations. I don't have any presentations, but we, as you see on our agenda, we have a lot of resolutions for a lot of important things that we'll be talking about shortly. we'll be talking about shortly here. Old business. Anybody on the board have any old business?
I think we should just do a reminder that our citizen of the year nominations are still open and available, and we are looking for more of those nominations. So if anyone is interested in submitting, you just have to send a, a brief write-up on the reasons that you're nominating someone, and it goes to the town clerk, goes to Danielle. And we're keeping those open through the end of the year.
Yep.
Yeah.
End of the year.
And then I would also just say, we are not having our second meeting of the month when our committees typically report in. I know, that's ahead. But I would, just before we get to that, I think we should maybe wrap up or summarize the parade over the weekend, if you don't mind.
Funny you say that.
Well, let me guess, you have some pictures for us.
Come on up for the, I just want, you know, yeah, we're getting to the end of the year, but as Arlette comes up and talks about, you know.
The festival.
The festival that we just had. I just have a few pictures. So this was the biggest hit right there, right? Like, this was the new addition this year? Real live reindeer, right? So you guys really pulled that off, but you know.
I, I want to take a minute and just, a huge thank you to everyone who came out to make our annual Christmas festival, holiday lights parade, and tree lighting celebration absolutely magical. From start to finish, the community spirit was shining as bright as the lights in the park. Our festival kicked off with amazing energy. Kids crafts, cocoa, holiday music, food trucks, live reindeer, and a visit from Santa himself, thank you to Milton engine. Smiles, laughter, and holiday cheer made the park feel like a true winter wonderland. And then came the holiday lights parade, and wow, what a show. Every flute, every group, every twinkling light brought so much joy to the streets. Huge shout out to all the who participated and helped make this tradition something special to look forward to each and every year. And then finally, together, gathering at the tree lighting was a perfect ending. From samurfs by the fire to music, food, and family celebrating side by side, you all helped us light up the park and the holiday season. So to our volunteers, especially the recreation committee that was out there from 1:00 p.m. on through the evening decorating and orchestrating all of this, huge shout out to the recreation committee. Volunteers, the vendors, the parade participants, it's no easy feat, wrapping a truck in lights like Mr. Ravicio did, and Mr. Santini and the rest of the participants, but they looked really, really amazing. And to the families and friends that came out to make this event unforgettable, your support is what brings so much magic to Marlborough year after year. So, thank you to the entire community. And then before we wrap up our holiday season, we have one more event. The Grinch movie event is this Sunday, December 14th. Tickets are still available, and they're 50% off right now. So you're getting a $5 ticket. That includes your Grinch punch, your popcorn, and a special appearance by the Grinch himself. You can't find a better deal, and it's here at your community center that everybody worked so hard to revitalize. So please purchase your tickets and, and come on Sunday. And then on behalf of the recreation committee, we want to wish everyone a warm, joyful, and bright holiday season. Until next year, we'll see what we have up our sleeve.
And I'm just gonna chime in there and thank Arlette and Jenna for everything in organizing the event, but especially for the reindeer that was no easy feat. Those came from the Finger Lakes and had, were being negotiated for months. So great job in getting that there. I think it definitely took it up a notch. And then a big thank you to Naomi Viviano also, who worked, I can't even fathom how many hours on decorations for the park, blowing up balloons and creating all kinds of creative things that are way above my pay grade when it comes to creativity, but she did a tremendous job.
Yep, she did. And, you know, again, thank you to the rec committee. Thanks, Arlette, Jenna, and then Naomi, yes, she did an excellent job on. You know, it's the little things. We were talking about it at the event, that make the event even more special. It's those decorations, it's the little extra stuff that you do. The food trucks, and you know.
Our DJ, Steve Vittoria is DJing, I think, every rec committee event. It gives us the best deal on, on entertainment that you could possibly get. He's tremendous. So it really is a community effort all the way around.
So yes, thank you. Thanks to rec committee. Keep up the good work. And yes, go see the Grinch at the community center. It's a new event this year. We went off the Polar Express this year and trying something different, a bigger venue, bringing more people. So come out, it's this Sunday, right? So.
Yes.
Scott, I would like to make a comment. This is also, Chief, I, I observed a, a a safety issue out there. If we're starting and having these events, and more and more we're having these events, when the people are exiting this event and walking to the front and to the cars and Milton hardware, and when they're going, two avenues to get out, either to the right in the bend or to the left, it's completely dark. And everybody, I was walking out myself, I had the cellphone and the light. What's that? As you walk, or you're exiting from the pavilion, and you're walking or either to the left, the bend there, or you're walking to the right by the playgrounds, it gets really dark there. Everybody was out with their cellphones looking at it. But I think what I found that what, to me, was normal, but the thing that I found the people were struggling was the people with the strollers and with the multi-kids, and really dark. The only thing I'm saying is that maybe we should do some kind of temporary lighting when the people are exiting the event, so that there's not, you know, as a safety, or you know, a stone, or, you know, with the stroller, or pothole, or whatever.
Sure.
Yeah, because I know we did have safety lighting up.
Currently, the highway department is working with Central Hudson. There are quite a few lights out at the park right now. They're evaluating that situation. There might be some changes coming in reference to the lights. It's all in the works yet, so I don't have a lot of details. We did have some light towers up. They were more so inside the park. So as you come in through the fence, down the straightaway just before it turns left towards the pavilion, there was a light tower there. That section between like the basketball court, even maybe a little closer, 9W, that is dark. That is something that we can address.
And also the other end as well.
So let me interrupt you, because, you know, we, we met up there last week with Central Hudson already. We noticed three lights out already. But people don't realize, all the lights in the park are prepaid lights. We pay rental on the poles that are Central Hudson, and we pay rental for the lights on the pole. What people don't know is that costs $950 a month. So, and we had three lights out, because we went up there and we did pre-check to see what lights were lit and what weren't lit, because we knew we were having this event. We did bring up three of our portable light towers. So I'm glad you pointed it out, but yes, we did have them up there. They are reevaluating all the lights. Two of the lights that you're talking about, one of them would have shined towards that area you're talking about. So, you know, we probably should have maybe had a, a tower up by the basketball court, would have probably worked, but. Yeah. Yeah.
We did park as many as we can in the snow. That's something we're gonna look at next year.
Yeah. And I had a, I had a meeting with John and Gary today at the highway department. We're also looking at putting more parking at the, at the park. But everybody don't realize, we have 25 acres of land at the park. A lot of that's in the wooded area. It's somewhat difficult to get to at this point, but there's, there's ways to make more parking at the park. As you come into the park, we actually do own more property on that road. That's to the north side of the road, that we're gonna be putting parking in there. We started to clear a little bit this year. But, you know, John has other things he's got to do too. I can't have the, keep asking him to do every single thing in the park as soon as it needs to be done. But these are things we are definitely looking.
Maybe we should look into buying a couple more of those light towers. They, we got a great deal on them.
But I mean, right now, I gotta make sure, we gotta get Central Hudson all straightened out, because from what, you know, from what the rep is telling me, and what, what, there's no breakdown in that $950 a month, and it doesn't make sense to me that we're paying that much a month by the amount of poles we have and the amount of lights we have. But for some reason, Central Hudson doesn't break their bill down into each light, what we rent. Lights that I know I have, and I know how much they cost, so it doesn't add up. So, we're evaluating this. I mean, but it's a good, valid point that we're aware of, but I'm glad you're bringing it up.
Just an observation, Scott.
But you're right. Well, we're trying to figure out, is it worth it for us to, instead of re-renting all these lights, to put our own in? Right, that's another option.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could get C A C points if we went to, you know, installed our own LED lighting.
And it's a good point too. There's, a lot of them aren't LEDs. That's another issue. They're, these old light fixtures that have been in there for a long time.
Might be a good next project to look into, Mickey.
There's a, there's definitely things that have to be done. But as we're using the park more and more and more now, you know, part of this discussion came out too because of the pickleball court, because we want to put lights on the pickleball court.
In the same note, it's like, it's Marlborough Central Park. And also, I want to add is that for people that, a lot of us grew up here, we know the park well, but also when there's guests that come into town, it'd be nice to have some kind of a billboard showing all the spots on, of the park. You know, where the pickleball courts are, where the soccer field is, where the camp, you know, the, the trails to go to the waterfalls. To come in there, as soon as you enter the park, to have a billboard to show a little snapshot of where everything is in the 27 acres that we own there, it'd probably be something else that we should do as well, to just.
I told you, go, I told you, get on it. You told me this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I said, go, go for it, didn't I?
But I'm just saying to you that it'd be nice to have the community involved.
No, I get it. It's, it's a really good idea.
Oh, Charlie, there you go. I supposed to talk to you, Charlie.
There you go. That's, you're supposed to talk to Charlie.
Get your drone up there and take a big shot.
Alright, let's move on.
I'll talk to you about it.
New business. The new business I have is, I gotta have a motion by the board. We are gonna cancel the December 22nd, 22nd town board meeting. That holds with tradition, as we've never have the last meeting of December for Christmas week. So I need a motion to cancel the December 22nd meeting of, of this month.
I will make the motion to cancel the December 22nd town board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So just so the public knows, the next meeting will be Jan, the actual regular meeting of the month will be the 12th of January. But having said that, January 1st, we, I don't know if I mentioned this last meeting or not, but I will say it again. January 1st, we will be having our swearing ceremony here for all elected and appointed officials at 12 o'clock. And right after that meeting, we were gonna have a short, regular meeting, and then we're gonna go right into our reorg meeting on that meeting. And obviously, you don't have to stay for that if you don't like, but we're gonna have that on January 1st. So in order to make sure everybody gets paid, and we have to do that for the beginning of the year. So that's the new business. Correspondence, believe it or not, I have no correspondence, which is a good thing. Anybody got any public comments? Regular public comments. Come on up there, Mickey.
The cost of electricity definitely is something that the C A C has been trying to get Central Hudson's figures on the cost that we've, for our greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And we've been trying to do that for over a year, so I understand how slowly they work. But it also brings up the question that I had from a comment that was made it a couple meetings ago. It's like $3,000 a month for the community center. So I've noticed being at the community center in the evening, there's no instructions on who controls the temperature, that sometimes the lights, I don't know if the lights are automatically on or off. I don't know what systems are in place for heat regulation, but that's certainly something that should be looked into if it hasn't been already. And if the C A C can help, you have to let me know.
Remember, we're using all, for the most part, we're using the heat pumps, right, which are all electric, to heat the whole and cool the whole place. And only, only if it gets, like right now, when it gets below 32 degrees, it automatically kicks over to gas. So right now, it should be on gas. The thermostats are all regulated. And they're automatically changeover, like I said, but we're running on all electric for the most part. That's why we're trying to get the.
Does the temperature go down?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So like, for example, at nighttime when nobody's using it, it's set at maybe 66 or something like that?
Yeah. That's all regulated. And it's just expensive to run, run a building.
2026, we gotta get the solar panels. So once we get the solar panels up there, it's gonna reduce the electricity a lot. So it's gonna be really cost reduction 2026.
I do so wish they had been placed at the beginning of renovations.
It's too mu, it's very, it's very expensive. But yes, Central Hudson rates are, as we know, are very high right now. And unfortunately, if everybody hasn't heard, New York State allowed them to get a very nice increase this year too, again. So I expect to see our electric bills to go up even higher, believe it or not. But that's what it is. I mean, you know, we, we, we applied for the, the, the program for the E V charging systems, and they discontinued that program now for the set rates. So now we just applied for a new program. We're hoping we get that one, but they're.
You mean the one that we were, that was negotiated between Michael and, they had it.
They discontinued that now.
Salinkwell was bought by another company.
But we, but we, we are re-applying for another program that they have, and we're waiting to hear back. But yes, Central Hudson, I don't know, I don't know what it is. It's not just Central Hudson, it's New York S E G, it's all the companies, it's, you know, we're, look, we're getting 40% of our electric from Canada, everybody, just so you know, alright? So Canada's got us, and they could charge what they want. And then we have, they get, it gets passed on through us, through them. So if we want to get serious about everything being electrified, we have to get serious about building electric plants. That's all I could tell you. But at this point, we got the cart before the horse. So, you know, anyway, I don't want to talk all night about electrics.
No. Well, at least I will point out that at least one of the main functions of the climate smart communities was to do these greenhouse gas inventories. So it's just unfortunate that the people that can give you all the information aren't available. So I sympathize with your situation. And if there's anything else we can do. And I will be looking into seeing if there's any grants available for solar lighting. As you just suggested here tonight, I'll be looking into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've got a lot of resolutions. Alright. Gail, you ready for this, Gail? So if everybody knows the passing of Councilman Malinelli, which allows, at this point, the town board with section 64.5 of town law, for us to appoint a member of the board. That person will be able to serve for one year, which then they have to run for the remaining term, which would be one year, which then they'd have to run again for another term, which would be three years, because it would be cut to get you back onto the election year, which then eventually will be four years again. So it's a crazy time right now we're going through with the elections, but eventually, in the long run, it'll all work its way out where every election in the state of New York will be during a presidential election or governor's race. So I'm happy to be able to do this resolution.
able to do this resolution because Gail has been my deputy supervisor for the four years. He's a very active member of our Board, even though he's the deputy supervisor, but he does a tremendous amount of work for us and for me. And I'm honored that he would take this position on. So thank you, Gail. So Resolution 96 is to point the, and I just want to say, you're going to see that it says as of January 1st. And I want everybody to understand, I could put Gail up here right as of right now, but the wishes of Councilman Malinelli was that he wanted to resign by the end of the year. And he was very aware that we were discussing this with Gail, and he was very happy that Gail was going to take his spot on the Board. So this is the reason why this is as of January 1st. So, Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the unfortunate passing of Councilman Ed Malinelli, who served as a diligent and loyal Town Board member for 18 years, leaves one Town Board seat vacant, which vacancy was announced at the Town Board's regular meeting on November 24th, 2025. And whereas pursuant to Town Law Section 64.5, the Town Board has authorized to fill vacancies as an elective Town Office by appointment, and such appointee shall hold office until the commencement of the calendar year's next succeeding the first annual election at which vacancy may be filled. Therefore, be resolved that the Marlboro Town Board, after due consideration, hereby appoint Gail Opper Jr. to serve as a Town Board member. Be it further resolved that the appointment shall be for the term beginning January 1st, 2026, and end in December 31st, 2026. The foregone resolution was duly put to vote, which resulted as the following.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
This was a couple weeks ago, Gail. So, okay. Oh, thank you. I was reading like this, but I guess I don't have...
You weren't scrolling.
Resolution 97, to appoint a Planning Board Chairman and Deputy Chairman. So if everybody, everybody knows, Chris Brand has decided to retire from the Planning Board and at the end of the year. And the Town Board has selected Stephen Genison to be the Chairman. And Stephen has picked a Deputy Chairman, and that would be Fred Callow. And you're going to see consistency now. The Town Board decided to make deputies on all boards, just like we have a deputy. We want all boards to have a deputy. That way, in case the chairperson, or in my case, the supervisor's in here, we have someone that runs the meeting, and it's clear that everybody knows who that is. So we're implementing that this year. It'll be in our reorg that way. But I want to thank Steve for stepping up to do this job. Steve has experience in running boards. He was the president of the school board. So we're appreciative that he's doing this now for the Planning Board. And here we go, Steve. So Resolution 97, to appoint a Planning Board Chairman and Deputy Chairman. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Planning Board Chairman, Chris Brand, terms will conclude on December 31st, 2025. And whereas Chris Brand does not wish to be appointed to the Planning Board, and whereas the open position of Chairman needs to be filled on January 1st, 2026. And be it resolved that Stephen, it's S-T-E-P-H-E-N, Genison, be appointed as Planning Board Chairman effective January 1st, 2026. Be resolved that the Town Board wishes to also appoint a Deputy Chairman to the Planning Board. Be it resolved that Fred Callow be serving as a Deputy Chairman effective January 1st, 2026, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And again, thank you, Steve. Okay. Resolution 98, to appoint a part-time police officer. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town of Marlboro Police Department has a position for part-time police officer. And whereas the recommendation of the Chief of Police to appoint Devon Breslin to be resolved, that Devon Breslin be appointed effective immediately, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Okay. Resolution 99, to reappoint a member of the Planning Board. So we had two openings on the Planning Board, and I could tell you, oh, man, we had a lot of applications for the Planning Board. The Planning Board interview process was thorough this year. We had Councilman Kauki, Councilman Zambito did the first interviews. They narrowed it down for us. Councilwoman Sessa did interviews. I did some interviews with those three remaining people. And at this point, we were reappointing Joe, and that's what this one is here. So Resolution 99, to reappoint a member of the Planning Board. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the advertisement was placed in the local newspaper for position of Planning Board. And whereas the Planning Board Committee had interviewed for the position. And whereas Joe LaFarrow wishes to remain on the Board, and whereas the recommendation of the Planning Board Committee to reappoint Joe LaFarrow, be it resolved that Joe LaFarrow be reappointed to the Planning Board effective January 1st, 2026, with the term ending December 31st, 2030, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And thank Joe for his continued service to our community. And here we go. So Nick, it's Boszo. Nick's here tonight. If everybody doesn't know Nick, he's sitting right in front of Steve. He's very well qualified, has a lot of great credentials that I think is going to benefit our Planning Board. Believe it or not, we haven't had a farmer on our Planning Board in quite a while. Nick's going to fill that void. He has a degree in landscaping design, and he knows how to read design plans and spec plans. And I think that's going to bode well when it comes to working on the Planning Board. And I think he's going to be a great addition. But I just want to say to anybody that did apply, when other openings come about, reapply. Because we had a lot of really good applicants, and it was really hard for these guys to narrow this down. But I think we got a really good candidate here, and he's going to serve our town well. So Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the advertisement was placed in the local newspaper for the business, position of Planning Board. And whereas the Planning Board Committee has interviewed for the position, and whereas the recommendation of the Planning Board Committee to appoint Nicholas Boszo, be resolved that Nicholas Boszo be appointed to the Planning Board effective January 1st, 2026, with the term ending December 31st, 2030, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Congratulations, Nick. All right. Resolution 101, to appoint a member to the Ethics Board. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas two positions for the Town Ethics Board, and whereas the Ethics Board Committee interviewed for the position, and whereas the recommendation, the Ethics Board Committee, to reappoint the following members, James Kuha, conservative, term ending 12/31/28, Ed Mackey, independent, term ending 12/31/2028. And this is the only time we ever mention people's parties, because in our code, you have to have certain balance on the Ethics Board. And that's why we, that's why that's there. Be resolved that the members, James Kuha and Ed Mackey, be reappointed to the Ethics Board, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And thanks again to James and Ed. Okay. So explanation on this one. This is a waiver of a requirement, of a condition on a site plan. During the site plan review, and believe it or not, unbeknownst to the Town of Marlboro Town Board, the Planning Board recommended that part of North Street property be donated to the Town of Marlboro. Talking with John Alonji, Highway Superintendent, he has no need for this property at all. He does not, it was, talked about possibly for us to widen North Road at any given time. I guess that's why it was put in as a condition. Again, Town Board was never notified that this was even a condition of site plan approval, so I'm not sure how it was put in by the Planning Board. But we talked about it, and I talked to John, and John does not want this donation to happen. So we are going to waive this condition on this site plan. And this is what this resolution is for. Waive the condition of final site plan development. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas on November 6, 2023, the applicant, 2020 North Road LLC, Robert Pollack, the applicant, submitted application to the Town of Marlboro Planning Board. The Planning Board requesting a site plan special use and a lot line revision approval for expanding the Buttermilk Falls Hotel and Resort. And whereas on December 16th, 2024, the Town of Marlboro Planning Board granted conditional final site plan special use permit of light lot line revision approvals for the Buttermilk Falls Hotel and Resort expansion. And whereas a condition of approval, the applicant were to make offer of secession to the Town of Marlboro Town Board to convey ownership of certain lands within North Road to the town. And whereas the Town of Marlboro does not wish to take title of the property described. Now therefore, be resolved by the Town Board, the Town of Marlboro, that the conditions contained in IIVB and Section 2 ADI in the resolution granting final site development plan, special use permit and lot line revision approvals for the Buttermilk Falls Hotel, Resort and Expansion dated December 16th, 2024, be waived. And the foregone resolution was duly put to vote, which resulted in the following.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilman Kauki?
Yes.
Councilman Zambito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa?
Yes.
Resolution 103, to appoint a zoning Board Deputy Chairman. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Be it resolved that the Town Board wishes to appoint a Deputy Chairman of the Zoning Board. Be it further resolved that Jeff McKeel will serve as the Deputy Chairman effective January 1st, 2026, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. Resolution 104, transfer funds. So we do this at the end of the year sometimes when we have to replenish our general fund, who paid out funds for other projects. And in this case, one of them was the DPW Building Fund, and one was the Park Fund. And those were for specific reasons. So now we have to pay back the general fund. So whereas the Town Board needs to approve the transfer of funds, and be it resolved, the Town Board approves the following transfer of funds. The transfer of $65,202.83 from the Building Reserve Account, A dot 0230 dot 002, the General Fund, A dot 0200 dot 000, for added expense to the DPW Building. And the transfer of $18,480.61 from the Park Reserve Account, A dot 0230 dot 001, to General Fund, A dot 0200 dot 000, for the Bocchi Court and Boulders for the park, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And believe it or not, that's the end of our meeting tonight. But I want to say to everybody, I hope everybody has a great holiday season. It's been a great year serving with this Board. I can't thank our Board enough for everything they've done. My deputy, our department heads, you know, everybody in the town hall that does their job every day and makes this town run. I just want to thank every, each and every one of you for doing your job, because it makes my job that much more enjoyable. And I truly do enjoy doing this job for you. So expect even better things in 2026 from all of us. We have a list of items that we want to get to, which I will be bringing up at my fourth quarter meeting, which is on the 17th of December. And we will let everybody know what those things that we want to accomplish next year. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming to our meetings, and have a great holiday season. Manny, let's close it out.
Okay, it's 8:03, and I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thanks, everybody.